City Council, November 18th, 2013. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Amador.
Present.
Councilmember Teeter.
Here.
Councilmember Carson. Councilmember Benson. Councilmember Bullock. Councilmember McElDowney.
Here.
Councilmember Elliott.
Present.
Councilmember Douglas.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Please let the record show that we have a few councilmembers missing. Three at this time, but hopefully as we progress through the executive session this evening, they will show up and we'll let the record. We'll make sure that it's on the record that they did show up. So first item of business this evening is the executive session. I'm looking for a motion to enter into an executive session. Mr. McElDowney?
Do we have the statute up in front of me? Actually, hang on, I'll get it just one second.
Here, I can read it and you can make the motion to that. Twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, parentheses four, parentheses E, for the purpose of developing strategy for negotiations and instructing negotiators concerning DIA, and twenty-four dash six dash five oh two, parentheses four, parentheses F, parentheses one, regarding follow-up to the city manager's evaluation.
Would move that we convene executive session under the element described by the mayor.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion's carried. We will go into executive session at this time, and the intent is to be back out here at 6:30 to take care of the regular portion of the meeting.
Did J.D. come home?
Okay, yeah, she has an adjustment there. Thank you for letting us know that. Councilman Carson will not be with us this evening, so I would like to ask for the council to consider allowing her an excuse absence. Mr. Bullock?
Move to excuse.
Move to excuse Councilman Carson.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Carson.
Mr. Amador?
Second.
Have a motion and second to allow Councilwoman Carson's excused absence. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next, I'd like to invite all of you to stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, thank you all for being here. I'd like to allow the audience to introduce themselves. If you'll pass the microphone around, please.
Pam Strattler.
Betty Thomas.
Danny Thomas.
Al Hart.
David Lucas.
Sandy Correthers.
Martha Appelgarth.
Ramona Sisteros.
Francis Sechik.
Jenny Lovridge.
Guillermo Serman.
Joy Bishop.
Dennis Moon.
Captain Ray Fisher, State Patrol.
Mark Corio, C.D.
Sergeant Seifgen, State Patrol.
Corey Cullen, C.D.
Cheryl Karstens, Finance.
Chris Kramer, Community Development.
Sam Hoover, Public Works.
Heather McDermott, Adams County.
Roger Toenberg, Finance.
Ryan Case, Union Pacific Railroad.
Sarah Thompson Cassidy, Union Pacific Railroad.
Scott Hutchings, Waste Management.
Karen O'Donnell, Parks and Recreation.
Kathy Blakeman, Human Resources.
Maria DeAndre, Public Works.
Lisa Burnett, SunCor Energy.
Sean Howard, Information Technology.
Get that microphone back on so everybody can hear me. First item on the agenda is proclamations and recognitions. We'll start with the 2013 flood update and recognitions. Mr. Hayes, will you please go to the podium?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I've got a brief presentation summarizing all of the activity that the city has been coordinating over the last couple of months, and then we're going to proceed with some recognition for all of the agency partners and volunteers and staff that assisted during the event. First of all, some of this may be known to you, but I'm going to show some of the data that we found. There was really unprecedented rainfall starting on Tuesday, September 10th, that resulted in devastating flooding, not only in our community, of course, but some of our neighbors to the north and west. Commerce City received as much as 10 inches of rain, with our September annual average rainfall in Denver being about an inch and a half. There was also significant runoff from upstream into the city, most notably from Aurora into the Sand Creek area, as well as Denver into the Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge. It's a great map we received from the Fish and Wildlife Service. You can see, just to orient you a little bit, here's I-70 kind of cutting through the center of that blue circle, and you can see the rainfall intensity that occurred directly to the south of us was in the 10 to 12-inch range, and again, everything flowed to the north and to the west. It's another map from NOAA, and I think it's important to note here, they did designate this what we call a thousand-year flood, and that does not necessarily mean that it's going to happen every 1,000 years, but it exceeded a 1 in 1,000 chance of happening in any given year. So we could have an event like this two or three times a year, it'd be extremely rare, but it's less than 1/10th of 1% chance of this happening in any given year, what we occurred in our community. Here's a little more sophisticated drainage pattern map, too, that points out why we had to take such a drastic response during the event. Of course, we've got Sand Creek on the south here, which caused a lot of concern as it flowed towards the confluence and towards the SunCor refinery. We also had a lot of flows that went into Sand Creek from the southern part of Rick Community, but you can see, most of the arrows are pointing to the north and to the west, all trying to get over to Fairfax Park. And you'll see some pretty dramatic photos from September 12th and 13th that I'm going to show you later, that shows why those areas were really severely impacted. The other issue that occurred was the Havana Pond over here on the refuge. That dam actually failed, and a lot of the water that was normally diverted at a slower rate to the east and then to the north and west was released immediately to the northwest and was only held back by a railroad dam that we were very concerned was in danger of breaching in the overnight hours. And you'll see, again, some pretty dramatic photos that I've got from an aerial view that'll show how close that came to overtopping that dam that night. That resulted in a lot of evacuations to the Irondale neighborhood, which included both county and city residents. So again, the city did coordinate our emergency response to the flooding in the early morning of the 11th and continued through the 16th. Very pleased to report, there was no loss of life or injuries, no significant structural damage. There was significant damage to our trail facilities, but we maintained consistent communication with the community as well as several other audiences during the event. A few of the highlights of our emergency response. Again, there was extensive coordination with the Emergency Operations Center that was activated the night of September 11th. South Adams County Fire, North Glenn Ambulance, as well as emergency response teams from Arapahoe and Douglas County, and numerous others helped us during the initial stages of the event. On September 12th at 1:20 in the afternoon, there was a formal emergency declaration, which was a critical point so that we could make ourselves eligible for future aid. The city buildings were also closed on that Thursday and Friday. Road closures, I've got a map up here. Again, there are more than a dozen, including parts of Highway 85 near Fairfax Park, parts of Highway 2, East 96th Avenue, which again runs along the north side of the refuge, as well as 88th Avenue over from Highway 2 over to I-76. There were also the evacuation areas I mentioned. Here are they shown graphically. We've got Irondale to the north, the area north of the dog track, the Mile High Greyhound Park, because of the drainage that was occurring from that site to the north, and then parts of the Fairfax neighborhood, including the Shady Lanes Mobile Home Park. The other thing that we point out is an emergency shelter was established very, very early in this process by the Red Cross at the Adams City High School. There were 350 beds available that night, only 55 were used, thankfully. They also handled a lot of these special needs evacuees from the Woodridge Nursing Center. The police department did assume control of that shelter Thursday evening, frankly, after hearing reports directly from some of you who visited the site that weren't, that were concerned it wasn't going quite as well as we would have hoped, so we dispatched police out there and we took control of that center the very first day. Another thing I would point out, this Disaster Assistance Center, immediately following the event on September 16th, the county went ahead and set up a Disaster Assistance Center at our recreation center. That ran from September 18th through the 21st, come a Wednesday through Saturday. That was the countywide assistance center, and some of our seniors volunteered there. We had other folks in the community that volunteered to help out there, as well as a lot of staff from not only the county, but also the city. The police department has completed an after-action report, and as I understand, our new emergency manager is here this week. He started this week, so we're going to be going through this report with him in a little more detail and finding out what we can do better next time. Hopefully, there is no next time, but there will always be some event that we're going to have to plan for. Few of the highlights, there were over 1,190 calls for service via AdCom, 35 outside entities assisted the city, 10 agencies were involved in the incident command during the event. Nearly 400 calls were received in the ad hoc call center and police records. And again, this is an area where a lot of staff that don't normally interact with the police department, aren't members of the police department necessarily. From all across the city, a lot of departments stepped up and manned to that center so that we were available, even though city offices were closed. We were able to take phone calls from people just wanting information, where do I go for help, what's the latest information that you've got? The shelter, again, I mentioned, about 55 beds were used, but because Woodridge is there, we did house nearly 150 people. There were 114 animals evacuated from the Irondale neighborhood, and I mentioned the closure of about 10 miles of roads. There were several lessons learned. I'm not going to go into the specific details, but they fell under these general categories, really, technology, software, having the right forms. We had a lot of people running around with phones and maybe didn't have police radios, so some things that we need to work on there. Communication, I think, you know, we had a lot of good information, it was just a matter of making sure that was more organized with the situation reports and so forth. Training, there was the idea that more non-police department staff need to be trained in incident command, as well as maybe even some long-term training that would be more intensive, several days, if you will, for example. And then just general fatigue. I know there were a lot of people working long hours, and for those of us that maybe don't work the normal 12, 14-hour days, it did get rather grating for a lot of folks, but fatigue was just one general issue that we know we need to be cognizant of as we're going forward. So what has happened since the event? FEMA completed some preliminary damage assessments in the days following the event. Thresholds of damage were met, which allowed for federal aid. Adams County also convened a multi-department team and invited various agencies to participate, including us. FEMA opened a disaster recovery center in Commerce City, again, for the countywide recovery, but it was housed in Commerce City. Did a registration of about 155 addresses in and around Commerce City. Did pick up some from Henderson and DuPont on the report from FEMA, so I kind of counted those on the list. On October 15th, there were kickoff meetings held in Adams County, and then we also had one specifically for Commerce City. A group of people from FEMA were going to be onsite for two months, assisting us with paperwork so we can maximize all of our reimbursements, ensure compliance with all the federal laws, because there will be a future federal audit of this money, and so we want to make sure that we're doing everything exactly proper as we go forward. And that team is a lot of experience from other disasters around the country that we've all heard of, and so they've been through this before, and it really helped us get through that process. On October 21st and 22nd, FEMA did extensive field visits with Parks and Public Works, and also reviewed what our financial documentation was going to be. Category A and B emergency work was approved in the initial stages of the event, and then once the thresholds were met, category C through G for permanent work was approved. And just a quick rundown of what those are, as you might imagine, emergency work is debris removal and emergency protective measures that need to be taking place immediately, sometimes even during the event. The other items are permanent work. Again, these are items such as roads and bridges, water control facilities, buildings, utilities, and then a catch-all category of other, which has a lot of detail in it as well. Damage assessments are due 60 days from the kickoff meeting, so we've got another couple weeks where we're getting that finalized. Emergency work does need to be completed within six months, we think we're well on track for that. The longer-term work needs to be completed within a year and a half. 75% of the projects may be reimbursable by FEMA, and I should say 75% of the dollar amount of those projects. The state has stepped up to help us with half of the remaining balance, so they're coming to our aid with 12.5%, with the smaller amount of 12.5% remaining for local funding. Current project cost estimates around $700,000. We don't think that's going to go up any more than that. We're pretty good with those numbers. There may be some additional things, such as police vehicles and other things that we may try to get reimbursement for, but it'll be relatively small compared to that number. We're also assisting Metro wastewater with coordination with FEMA for the Sand Creek Confluence repairs. There's no detailed estimate yet. Initial estimates were in the 2 to 4 million range. There was a lot of bank that literally just washed out down into the Platte River, and so Metro is taking the lead because it's their property to get that bank stabilized again, and they're hoping to get some reimbursement from FEMA for doing that. Parks Recreation and Golf also had a very detailed report, which we provided to FEMA, outlining some of the impacts that occurred during the event. Quick update on the refuge, I mentioned the Havana Pond's dam structure failed. Staff is participating in meetings between Fish and Wildlife, Urban Drainage, and Denver. The initial road repairs on the refuge have been completed, it has reopened. Denver will be the lead agency, though, and Urban Drainage will ensure the dam repairs meet state safety requirements. The reason behind this is all the flows are coming from Denver, so it's really flood-plained system that is intended to take Denver's water. So they are taking the lead, but we will be participating. We're also hoping that previous deficiencies are going to be remedied with the new design of that pond and dam structure. Now, for the residents and businesses in the audience, I want to point out that FEMA has continually extended the registration period for assistance. However, I do not expect they will extend this much further. The latest deadline right now is November 30th, so anyone who believes they will be impacted by the flood should register. Even if you do not need any assistance right now, the key is to get registered, because if you decide after November 30th you do need help and you're not registered, you would be ineligible. A common situation is that someone may have cleaned up their home, and they feel they've remediated all of the water, but they may have mold issues that aren't readily apparent. And FEMA representatives have told us, this is a common occurrence with flooding, where you'll get this six months, 12 months later after the fact, and if someone doesn't register now, they may not be eligible for help. Attended a breakfast at the Community Reach Center last week with some of the council members, I know Mr. Teeter was there. They have coordinated with FEMA for anyone in Adams County who's experiencing any type of crisis related to the flooding. And again, Community Reach is a mental health organization. They encourage you to contact them through their website or their phone number, and they've also done a direct mailing. This is the front and back of a bilingual postcard that they've sent out to people. Again, you've got the FEMA information there, as well as Community Reach, so this has no deadline, really, to it. Continue to reach out to anyone you know that might need assistance, encourage them to contact the right folks. Lastly, charitable giving. Governor Hickenlooper announced a new website on October 15th to facilitate donations, and within a few short weeks, over 15 million in donations were received through this organization. If someone is not getting the necessary assistance through FEMA that they think they need, this may be another angle where people could try to connect with some of the charities. Also, registering with United Way through 211 is another great source. Also, registering with United Way through 211 is another great source for charitable Just quickly on some long-term projects that are coming out of this, FEMA has opened up an opportunity here that there may be some mitigation projects where we could prevent future flooding by making some long-term capital improvements into our storm drain infrastructure. So, we've identified a few projects. The Fernal Trail Pipe Rehabilitation, this is over on Colorado Boulevard and 70th Avenue in that area. We think we need some improvements over there. We did have a pipe fail in the early stages of the event. Fairfax Park Outfall Improvements, although the park worked exactly how it was supposed to as a drainage structure, it could be improved. There's opportunities for the outfall improvements to get that water, again, out of the park quicker by facilitating the outfall improvements out to the Platte River. And then last thing was First Creek Crossing at 96th Avenue. This is the low-water crossing if you will, where the water comes off the refuge. We've had to continually close that road, again, even in minor flooding events, and so we're looking at that as another project. Our IT Department did a great job of coordinating with Dr. Cog for a laser mapping project. They're going to be able to map parts of our city with very high technology, not only in the flooded areas but areas out by DIA and our growth area, and so we're just tagging on to that contract as an opportunity to get some much more sophisticated maps than we've ever had at our disposal. And then lastly, you may have heard a story on the news about the FEMA trailers. There's a two-year storage area at the Mile High Marketplace. We worked very closely with FEMA to understand exactly what they were going to be using that site for, and it's purely for storage of the temporary housing that's going to be needed in a lot of the other communities throughout the region. And we went through an appropriate permitting process to make sure there's no residential occupancy of those homes and they'll be maintained in good condition. And really, this is the prime storage area for the entire region, so we're happy that we could step up and do our part when a lot of other communities are really struggling with some of these issues. I've got some quick photos here. I'm not going to narrate these because I've got them all captioned, but you can just kind of see some of the during the event and then the elected official event that we hosted on Friday during the recovery. I should point out at the elected official briefing, we did have US Senator Michael Bennett, staff from Senator Udall's office, Congressman Pearl Mutter was in attendance as well as his staff, County Commissioners Henry and Tedesco as well, six of our council members attended the briefing and then went on a tour of the refuge immediately following. And you can see Fairfax Park, thanks to Parks and Public Works folks who were out in the storm on that Thursday. Governor Hickenlooper did tour the Sand Creek area with Representative Moreno, you see there, on October 3rd, again, just surveying the damage so he had a bird's eye view of everything there. Again, September 12th was that Thursday, it was really the height of the event. I want to comment on this picture. This is the railroad bridge that was holding the water back. This is probably the best photo. You can see, this was about 150 yards wide and about 1,200 yards long in the middle of the night on the 12th. And you can see this sandy area where the water has receded, and if you look closely, there's a small area where it was actually starting to overtop that dam. We did have people out onsite, I know Mr. Lucas had staff from the refuge out there as well, and you can see why we were all concerned that that water was going to break And then just a few other shots of the city on that Friday. And it was, this was the only photo I could find in my slide roll where the sun was coming out, so I thought it was the appropriate last one to show. I'm open to any questions or we can roll right into the recognition at this point.
Does the council have any questions for Jim at this time? Saying none, go ahead, Jim.
All right. Well, I'm going to go ahead and read a list of names of the agencies that assisted us during this event, and then when we are concluded, we'll go ahead and have them come up for a photo with the city council. I do want to point out that although not listing names of staff and volunteers, we'd be remiss if not thanking them right out of the gate because a lot of people put in extra time away from their families, in some cases volunteering, really working out of their comfort zone, and I know we've got some of those volunteers here tonight as well as some of the staff that helped out, and so definitely want to acknowledge them as part of this recognition tonight. I'm just going to read these quickly and if you're here representing one of these agencies, if you could just stand up and then we'll have the photo opportunity at the end here. So, from Adams County, we had Animal Control, the Communications Center, Office of Emergency Management, Parks and Community Resources, their Public Information Officer, the Sheriff's Office as well as their SWAT unit, and the Adams County Transportation Department. School District 14 as well as Adams City High School, again, housing the evacuation shelter. Arapahoe County Incident Management Team, Brighton Police Department, City and County of Denver Animal Control, Civil Air Patrol, Colorado Animal Rescue Team, Colorado Department of Transportation, Colorado State Patrol, Colorado State University Extension, Douglas County Animal Control, their Animal Rescue Team, as well as the Douglas County Office of Emergency Management and the Douglas County Fairgrounds, Elbert County Sheriff's Office, Northland Ambulance, the Northland Thornton SWAT Unit, Red Cross, RTD, Salvation Army, South Adams County Fire, South Adams County Water and Sanitation, the US Army Corps of Engineers, and US Fish and Wildlife Service. Also, there were several private sector companies that really stepped up with donations and assistance during the event, and we want to recognize them tonight as well. Ace Hardware, Burlington Northern Santa Fe, El Hardin, G4 Security, Casa Del Rey, Suncor, Target, Union Pacific Railroad, Walmart, Warning Lights, Waste Management, and XL Energy. Thank you.
You know, I think it's important to hear from the elected officials, the magnitude and what this did to our community and the displacement of our residents, how thankful we are for all the outside agencies and for the businesses that stepped up and really helped. I know myself and a few of the council members were setting beds up in the evacuation site and we noticed there was no food and it was, we didn't, nobody asked. La Casa Del Rey just delivered a bunch of burritos. And I know all these different private sector and entity agencies that helped us, it wasn't a matter of asking, they just showed up to help us, and we are very grateful for the fact that you showed up to help us keep our community safe. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can we have them stand up? The people that were mentioned, stand up.
Yeah, we're going to ask all of you that were mentioned to please come forward so that we can take a picture down front.
And Mr. Mayor, if we could have any city staff who are here that we are recognizing tonight, please come up for the photo and seniors from our community, if you could join the group up front for a photo as well.
Okay, the one we need to come down the stairs and run to because we don't have a plan right there.
Okay, I can't see Kramer, so...
No, see, I was trying to push the button.
No, Crystal. Crystal, can you go actually right by Sarah Cassidy here?
Yes, there's a little spot right there.
Perfect. And then if our other State Patrol gentleman, yep, you queues, come this way, Snitch. Thank you. Okay, Sean, Tippy Toes, and, or Mr. Moon, you can go there. Okay, everyone, smile. One, two, three, smile again. One more time.
Michelle, why are you up here?
Cause. I directed traffic. Got it? Thank you.
Okay, and move on to the next item on our agenda, which is citizen communication. And I have one person signed up. I'll call your name and ask you to please come up to the podium. You'll be given three minutes to talk to the council, and it's Sarah Thompson-Cassidy. Good evening.
Good evening, thanks for having me, Mayor.
Absolutely.
I'm Sarah Thompson-Cassidy, I'm with Union Pacific Railroad. Do you need my address for the record?
Yes, please.
The work address is 1400 West 52nd Avenue, Denver 80221. First, we just really, on behalf of the railroad, wanted to thank you all for the very sophisticated presentation that was put forth tonight to assess the damages that were sustained by this community and by the railroad. On behalf of Union Pacific, we want to say thank you for being such a great partner. And Mayor Ford, I'd like to present to you a coin, a commemorative coin from Union Pacific. I'd like to present it to the city and give it to you to have here at the city, just to signify the great partnership and great collaborative relationship that Union Pacific Railroad enjoys with the city of Commerce City. And I also brought a calendar that I'll leave with Michelle for each of you and some of our friends on staff as well, just to make sure that you know how to reach us and that you know how much we appreciate the opportunity to work in your community and work alongside you so well. So, thank you very much and I'll approach if I have permission.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. That's awesome. Okay, good to see you.
Do we get to see her?
Yeah, I mean, I'll show everybody. Wasn't going to just sit over here and hold it by myself. I was going to pass it around so the council could see it. Pass it down that way and then I'll send it back the other way. Thank you very much and I'll have the city display that upstairs in the display case. Thank you. Mr. Benson, did you have something you want to say?
No, that was from before.
Okay. Okay, that concludes the citizen communication portion of the meeting. Now, we have minutes. We have the minutes of May 6th, 2013, July 15th, 2013, August 5th, 2013, and August 19th, 2013. Do they all have to be done separately or can we do them all together? All together, perfect. Well, there are some more, but they're, these are the ones we can all do together.
The one exception is the May 6th one where J.D. Carson was absent. You got to vote for allowing her abstention.
May 6th?
Mayor, we have July 15th and August 19th, Benson and Carson also were missing.
Benson?
Yeah, well, Benson was present, he just arrived later, so you don't have to excuse Jim, Councilman Benson, from voting.
Mr. Gaylor, will you please keep us on track with these? So, May 6th, July 15th, August 5th, and August 19th?
Yeah, let's approach it this way. Since Councilwoman J.D. Carson is not present, we don't have to excuse her from voting. So, therefore, in one motion, you can improve the minutes of May 6th, July 15th, August 5th, August 19th.
Okay.
And then a separate motion to excuse Councilwoman Elliott from October 7th, regular meeting and special meeting.
Jim?
I was not here on July 15th, so I can't vote on that one.
You weren't, it chose in the minutes later that you did vote. So, is that an error? Well, if you're saying you were not here, let's avoid further discussion, excuse Councilman Benson from voting on the July 15th minutes also and then move on.
So, then July 15th is out.
Right.
So, we'll take the May 6th, August 5th, and August 19th minutes, everybody can vote on, correct?
Correct.
Right.
All right, is there a motion in that realm? Mr. McAldowney?
Move to approve those minutes cited by the mayor.
Okay, Mr. Bullock?
Second.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of May 6th, 2013, August 5th, 2013, and August 19th, 2013. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, I'd like to ask for a motion to allow Mr. Benson to abstain from the minutes of July 15th, 2013. Is there such a motion? Mr. Bullock?
So moved.
Mr. McAldowney?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to allow abstention from Mr. Benson on the July 15th, 2013 minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, I need a motion and a second to approve the July 15th minutes. Mr. McAldowney?
So moved.
Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the July 15th, 2013... I have a motion and a second to approve the, uh, July 15th, 2013 minutes with the abstention by Mr. Benson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That motion is carried. Then we'll take care of those first four. Now we have special meeting and regular meeting minutes of October 7th. Um, Councilwoman Elliott was absent from the October 7th special meeting, so I'm asking for a motion to allow Councilwoman Elliott to abstain from the voting on these minutes. Mr. Bullock?
Move to allow Councilwoman Elliott to abstain from the November...
October 7th.
Uh, I mean, October 7th special meeting and October 7th regular meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Amador?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to allow the abstention from Councilwoman Elliott. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the special and regular minutes of September 7th, 2013. Mr. McAldowney?
So moved.
Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the October 7th, 2013 minutes with Councilwoman Elliott's abstention. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now we go into the consent agenda. We have the station area master plan. There's one item on the consent agenda this evening. Any council member can ask to have this item removed for a separate discussion and vote. This request does not require a motion and/or a vote. Does any member of the council wish to remove an item? Mr. Bullock? Mr. McAldowney?
No.
No?
I'm here for a motion.
If not, I'm open for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Mr. McAldowney?
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Will the city attorney please read the title of the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, for council's information, uh, wherever reference is made in the ordinance to station area master plan, we should insert dated October 2013. I'll just do that administratively, so the council doesn't need to act upon that as a, as a council amendment. So having said that, the title of the ordinance is, um, an ordinance adopting the City of Commerce City Station Area Master Plan.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock? Oh, never mind. We have a motion and a second. The title's been read. I'll ask for a roll call vote. And hopefully all of the council members have pressed their present button. Um, do we need to press?
I did. Perfect.
Okay, how about JD?
I pressed your accent.
Okay, perfect, thank you. I'll call for the roll call vote. Let the record show that it's approved. Consent agenda is approved. Uh, eight in favor, one abstention. Now we'll go into public hearings, the only public hearing we have. There's been a request to continue the public hearing, and I need to do that by, uh, vote. Mr. Bullock?
Move to, uh, continue the public hearing?
To February 3rd, 2014?
Okay, that sounds good. February 3rd, 2014.
Mr. McAldowney?
Second.
Yeah, I have a motion and a second to continue the public hearing to February 3rd, 2014, and that is zoning ordinance Z-898-13. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'd, I'd like to know why.
Would you like to know why? Uh, Mr. City Manager, would you explain to Mr. Benson why we are, uh, continuing this public hearing?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. The public hearing is being continued at the request of the applicant. Uh, this is part of a, uh, a much broader list of actions that city staff is working with the property owner on to address some longstanding issues on site. So as, uh, as part of that effort, uh, it's, uh, not quite at the appropriate time to rezone the property, so the applicant has asked that we continue the public hearing until February.
Okay. Now, I would, I was in the middle of that vote, and then I heard a few ayes up here. I just want to, um, call that vote again. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. So the record is, is, uh, aware of the ongoings. Next item on the agenda is ordinances on first reading. We have ordinance 1978. Does council have any questions for staff regarding this ordinance? Mr. Benson? Do you have questions on that ordinance, 1978?
I had my button pushed for the item before.
Mr. Bullock?
Uh, move to introduce ordinance 1978 on first reading.
Thank you. Mr. McAldowney?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to introduce ordinance 1978 on first reading. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on this particular ordinance? I'd like to ask the city attorney to read the title, please.
Title of ordinance 1978 reads as follows. An ordinance amending the 2009 edition of the International Fire Code, previously adopted by the City of Commerce City through ordinance 1907.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote.
My lights are out, please.
Mine isn't either. You need to wait till it is.
Okay.
There you go. We don't want to back Cheryl up too much over there at the, at the desk. Did you get it all?
It's there.
Nope, the lights went off. Please. Let the record show that that ordinance is introduced on first reading. Eight in favor, one abstention.
Excused.
Excused. Um, next item is annexation ordinance AN-230-13-13. Does anyone on council have any questions for staff regarding this ordinance? Saying none, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on this ordinance? Saying none, I'm open for a motion, Mr. McAldowney?
Would move to introduce ordinance AN-230-13.
Mr. Bullock?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to introduce annexation ordinance AN-230-13-13. Mr. Gaylor, will you read the title, please?
Title reads, "An ordinance amending the legal description attached as Exhibit A to ordinance AN-230-13 regarding property located at 6771 East 80th Avenue, Commerce City, Colorado."
Thank you. I'll ask for the roll call vote. Eight in favor, one excused. Next item, zoning ordinance Z-905-13-13. Does anyone on council have any questions for staff regarding this ordinance? Saying none, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on this ordinance? Saying no one, I'm open for a motion. Mr. Bullock?
Move to introduce ordinance Z-905-13-13 on first reading.
Thank you. Mr. McAldowney?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney, please read the title.
Title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the legal description attached as Exhibit A to ordinance Z-905-13 regarding property located at 6771 East 80th Avenue, Commerce City, Colorado."
Thank you. I've had a motion and a second. The title's been read. Is there a discussion of any kind before I call for the vote? Mr. Benson?
Well, I noticed that, uh, is that the correct number of the ordinance, 905-13, and then another 13, or should that be A? Since it's Exhibit A.
No, I'll explain that if I may, Mr. Mayor.
You may.
The one ordinance pertains to annexation, the other ordinance pertains to zoning, but it's of the same property. But the legal description, uh, when the property was annexed and then when the property was zoned, uh, needed to be corrected. And these two ordinances correct both the legal description and the annexation ordinance, and then the legal description and the zoning ordinance. That's why you have two ordinances dealing with the same property.
I got you. Thank you.
Now, I have a motion and a second. The title's been read. I'll ask for a roll call vote. Let the record show that it's introduced on first reading. Eight in favor, one excused. Next item on the agenda is presentations. We have one presentation this evening. It's moving forward, issue 2K. And I'll ask the city manager to, uh, present that presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my honor tonight to share with you some initial planning work that city staff has done on how to move forward and implement, uh, the voter mandate related to issue 2K that was approved on November 5th. Cheryl, if you could switch it over, please? By way of background, issue 2K was approved by voters on November 5th. Issue 2K was a 1% increase to the city's 3.5% sales and use tax rate. This is estimated to generate up to $15 million a year in additional revenue, although initially in the first year, we anticipate, uh, the 1% increase will generate approximately $10 million. There's been some question about this in the community already. The sales tax rate increase will take effect January 1st. Does not take effect as of November 5th. It will not take effect until the first of the year, uh, in 2014. The language in the ballot initiative committed to building five projects over a five-year period, those five projects are a new recreation center in the northern part of the city, widening of Tower Road, a new outdoor leisure pool in the southern part of the city, three new neighborhood parks, and new additions to the existing recreation center in the southern part of the city. This voter-approved dedicated funding can only be used to build those five projects, but the language does allow, uh, the increased sales and use tax revenue to also be used to operate and maintain those new facilities. And the whole process was the result of a two-year, very community-driven effort to identify how to implement programs and services that address the needs of a growing community and achieve the city's vision of building a better Commerce City for the future. We've identified some important goals that we believe must be met through the implementation of these five projects. It's important to build high-quality facilities. It's also extremely important to spend taxpayer dollars wisely and transparently. It's important to complete the projects on time and make time commitments in the ballot language. And it's also important to build these facilities the right way today to lower the city's long-term, uh, operation and maintenance costs. So everything that staff is doing moving forward in terms of building these projects must, under my direction, adhere to these four goals. We've taken an initial look at all five projects and developed an initial project schedule for each. You'll notice these are generalized schedules. As we proceed with the five projects, we will be developing much more detailed schedules and timelines. But initially, this is how we believe, uh, we can get all five projects completed within the five-year timeframe that was committed to in the ballot language. We've also added, uh, some remodeling work as an additional project to the Contra Community Center, uh, an effort that we've been working with, um, two community groups, uh, groups to address, so we've included in this overall time schedule. We've also included in this overall project schedule, uh, a timeline for community outreach. And also, an important factor is our financial analysis and, uh, the issuance of bonds to generate the revenue to pay for the projects. So again, this is an initial project schedule for all five projects. We've also spent some time, uh, developing an organizational structure, uh, within city government to make sure we can manage the construction of all five projects. This is a structure that we believe will help us build all five projects and adhere to the four goals that I showed on that previous slide. We've also included in this organizational chart some additional key capital improvement projects in our community to make sure we can adequately manage not only the five projects committed to as part of issue 2K, but some other very important capital projects that are part of, uh, the city's planning efforts over the next few years. Uh, the, the five projects identified in issue 2K are shown in the green boxes. We've identified key staff leaders that will be, uh, project managers for each of those projects in the green boxes. And we've also identified program managers that will have overall, uh, overall responsibility for the green projects under them. And you'll notice that, uh, the names identified in the red boxes are existing staff. Uh, it was my belief that the most competent folks that I could identify to manage the construction of these projects are existing members of the city's staff. We considered a number of different alternatives, including bringing in outside consultants, additional staff. There will be some need, some needs for additional staff, uh, within these organizational structures. But it was my strong feeling that, uh, the key leaders that I have the greatest competence and trust in are members of the existing city's leadership team, and that's why you will see their names in those red boxes. It does put the city manager in a key leadership position. It's my responsibility to, uh, report directly to the city council and make sure that all five projects, uh, are built on time, are, are high-quality projects, uh, that we're spending that taxpayer money transparently, and again, that we build these projects in such a way that we, uh, manage our long-term maintenance costs. So this is our initial organizational structure as to how we intend to tackle all five projects, plus these additional key capital improvement projects, uh, that we'll be working on over the same four or five-year period. We've taken a careful look at how we will procure goods and services in order to build the five projects. In some cases, we are exercising options on existing design contracts for, uh, particularly and initially, the three neighborhood park projects. But most of the goods and services to be acquired will be done through qualification-based selection processes. There'll either be a request for qualifications or a request for proposals to make sure we're getting, uh, the best value, uh, from, uh, from the marketplace. Some procurements will use what we refer to as a hard bid process that's strictly based on the lowest-priced responsible bidder for, uh, certain projects. Wanted to share with you some of our initial thoughts as to how we would accomplish each of the projects, beginning with the Frontera Neighborhood Park, one of the three neighborhood parks that was committed to as part of the ballot language. Uh, this project is just under 20 acres in size. Uh, we intend to, uh, complete the project using a design, bid, build, delivery method, which is to say the, the park will be designed, and then construction of the park will be , uh, bid out to the lowest responsible bidder. We've identified a design firm to help us design the park, a group of consultants called DHM, who are initially anticipating a $3.9 million budget. That's the same number that was utilized as part of the community outreach efforts, uh, during the summer, and as part of the information shared by the 2K campaign committee with the, uh, with voters in the community. We anticipate to start design very quickly. Uh, construction would complete in the early part of 2015 and open in 2015. Similarly, uh, the, the second neighborhood park committed to as part of issue 2K was the Turnberry Neighborhood Park. Uh, this parcel is smaller in size, nine and a half acres. Again, design, bid, build, delivery method. Uh, we have retained DHM to help design that park. And because the park is quite a bit smaller, the proposed budget is smaller, at 2.2 million. We expect to begin design in 2014, construction in mid-late 2015, and opening that park in 2016. The final of the three neighborhood parks is the villages of Buffalo Run East Neighborhood Park on the east side of Chambers. Uh, that site is nine acres. Again, design, bid, build, delivery method, with DHM doing the design, a $2.1 million budget. This will be the third park in sequence of the three neighborhood parks, so design will begin in 2014. will begin in 2015, construction in 2016, and opening sometime in 2017. Again, as we evolve in the design process with all of these projects, these project schedules will be refined with more detail. Second Creek Park Site is the location of the new Northern Range Recreation Center. The project consists of extensive site infrastructure for the new recreation center along with the construction of the new recreation center. We anticipate utilizing a construction management general contractor structure to build that project. The estimated budget is $58 million, and that's broken down in two key chunks. About $35, $36 million of that will be the construction of the actual recreation center. But because of the location within the Second Creek Park Site, extensive infrastructure is needed, including improvements to 112th Avenue. The total approximately $22 million. The design, the proposed schedule suggests we'd start design in 2014. Construction would begin in 2015. It's one of the largest, most complicated of the five projects, so it would open sometime in 2017. This is an aerial photo of the Northern Range that shows those improvements that are to be located in the Northern Range. The three neighborhood parks are outlined in yellow, and outlined in purple or pink is the Second Creek Community Park Site, which is the location of the Northern Range Recreation Center. I mentioned earlier, part of our intent was to make improvements to the Conter Community Center and repurpose it. We have committed to doing that to make space available for two key community organizations, the Commerce City Historical Society and the Commerce City Cultural Council. The project consists of minor remodels to that facility. The city will continue to own and maintain the building with lease agreements with both entities. We expect only minimal design will be needed in the first part of 2014, construction in 2014. And actually, if you remember that bar graph, we expect the project to be completed by the middle of 2014. The outdoor leisure pool, it is recommended to be located at Pioneer Park. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. We anticipate construction manager, general contractor, delivery method. The anticipated budget at this time is $10 million. Proposed schedule would be designed beginning in 2014, construction also beginning in the latter part of 2014, with opening early summer 2015. Thought we'd talk a little bit about the location of the outdoor pool site. It's important to identify the location early so we can initiate design of that facility. Pioneer Park is the site that staff is recommending as the location for that outdoor leisure pool. Pioneer Park already has room available. The property is owned by the city. We do not believe there is room at the existing recreation center on 60th Avenue and Parkway. We considered the Mile High Greyhound Park, but we believe that would cause a delay in ultimately getting the pool built. There was a park master plan approved in 2006 for the Pioneer Park Site in general that did include an outdoor pool, so we believe there's been some commitment to the community to locate the pool at that site. Some of the infrastructure does exist, including parking utilities, which should help lower costs and make the pool quicker to build. We also believe it's a location that's walkable, easy access to adjoining neighborhoods. We are already accustomed to providing site maintenance. And also, we think it's the best site in order to meet what we believe is a fairly aggressive timeline and get the pool opened by summer 2015. One of the five projects is additions and renovations to the existing recreation center. It is anticipated to include such additional facilities as a therapy pool, family locker rooms, and additional fitness space. We also anticipate a construction manager, general contractor, delivery method. We have begun working with an architect who's done extensive work with the recreation center already, a company called BRS. Anticipated budget of a little over $7 million. We anticipate design beginning in 2015, construction in 2016, and those new amenities being available in 2017. This again is an aerial showing the location of those facilities in the core part of the city. Circled in yellow is the existing recreation center. Outlined in blue is the location on the Pioneer Park Site identified for the pool. And to the very right edge of the slide, outlined in pink, is the location of the existing Conter Community Center. Certainly, last but certainly not least is Widening Tower Road. The project includes widening Tower Road from two to four lanes from 80th Avenue to 104th Avenue. We're not sure the best delivery method yet. We're thinking either construction manager, general contractor, or a design-bill-delivery method. The anticipated project budget at this time is a little over $58 million. We anticipate starting design right away in 2014, construction in 2016, with the entire four lanes open to traffic in 2018. We've included a sheet here for State Highway 2. State Highway 2 is not part of the issue 2K ballot language. We're including it here because it's certainly an important project that receives quite a bit of attention from the community. And everybody may not know that the city has received a grant from the Colorado Department of Transportation to widen Highway 2. So we're listing it here to provide some additional information to the community. The project does include widening Highway 2 from 72nd Avenue all the way to Highway 85. It's being funded through two different sources from the state. We anticipate a construction manager, general contractor, delivery method. Total proposed project budget, a little over $18 million. We anticipate starting design in 2014, with construction beginning in 2015, with the all four lanes being open to traffic in 2017.
If I may, that should be I-76, not 85, correct?
Yeah, I think that's our intent, is to widen it all the way up to I-76.
Right. It just shows 85. I just want to make sure people in the audience and at home were able to understand it. Go all the way basically to 120th Avenue where I-76 and Sable Boulevard will come together.
You're absolutely right. Thank you for catching that. And it's widened north of I-76, so this improvement will take it all the way up to the crossing over I-76, which is roughly 112th Avenue. Thank you, Mayor. This map shows the location of those projects. This map also shows some other roadway improvements that are anticipated over the next few years. Again, just to give council and the community an idea of the list of projects in total that city staff is getting organized to manage, though not all of these are part of issue 2K. Back to the issue 2K projects, this is a summary of the estimated project budgets for each project. Also lists what we anticipate would be the O&amp;M cost for these projects after they're built. This was information that we used to determine how the 1%, if approved by voters, would be spent on an annual basis to both cover the cost of building the projects, but also leave funds available to properly operate and maintain each of the facilities. So what's happening in the next 90 days? An important piece for us is finalizing the bond schedules. There's quite a bit of information that we need to collect to prepare for the issuance of bonds. We'll be continually refining the project schedules, especially those that are starting sooner than others. We're continuing to finalize our staff and consultant needs to make sure we've got the right folks to get the projects done. We will be creating program templates to make sure that our reporting to city council and the community can be done on a consistent basis. We're also refining how we go about procuring goods and services, again, to make sure that how we go about building these projects is done the right way. How we get them done is as important, if not more important, than the actual projects. We will be issuing requests for proposals and requests for qualifications to retain the experts we need to get the projects designed. We will be back to city council with resolutions to authorize the spending, including debt agreements. We will be developing a comprehensive communication strategy, including public engagement. I'd mentioned some council members earlier. There will be a study session dedicated to that topic on January 13th. And then we are finalizing a program website so that members of the public interested in progress on each of the projects can get immediate information. Additionally, those that have an interest in bidding on work or being considered for some of the $137 million in work will have a way to be notified when we're issuing bids or issuing requests for proposals or qualifications. So we've been very aggressive, very aggressive, rather, jumping on this, getting ourselves organized, because we made very strong commitments to get the projects built in five years, which requires that we get started on all of them right away. So each day that goes by brings us a day closer to that five-year deadline. Additionally, next steps, I talked about the January 13th study session. We will be talking with you on the 13th about a regular schedule for updates. We had initially thought, as part of our quarterly reports back to city council on our work plans, had some discussion with some of you earlier that you may want more frequent updates. We're happy to talk further with you about that, but also interested in what additional updates you would like. So this is, I think it's a comprehensive overview, but it's still an initial look at how we intend to get all five projects built, plus be able to adequately manage a number of other significant capital improvement projects that'll be occurring over the next five years as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have and take any feedback that you have about our initial approach to getting all of the projects done. So thank you.
Thank you for the update. Mr. Benson, do you have a comment?
To the issuance of the bonds, I know you had a, it looked like a 90-day timetable in there. Does that mean that by the end of that 90 days, we expect to be able to put the bonds on the market, get them underwritten and sold?
I'll provide an initial answer and invite Mr. Geller and Mr. Tinklinburg to refine it. Our thought is to issue the first series of bonds this winter, February, March timeframe. We don't want to borrow more than we need, but we want to have enough to get all of the projects going. We're not sure how many series of bonds would need to be issued to accomplish that, but we know the first series we think would need to be issued in the February-March timeframe.
Do we have the bonding capacity right now without having another Tabor vote to do that? Sure we do.
Honorable Mayor and Council, the ballot issue authorized, you know, it took care of the Tabor issue. So, yeah, that's all finished, and so all that is required now is to put the bond documents together and with your approval, which will take a resolution of council, if I recall, possibly even several resolutions, then we can go to market.
What do you expect the interest rate might be?
At this point, I think it's a little too early to tell. Once we get within a month of being able to issue, then we can start honing in. But the interest rates have not bounced around a whole lot in recent months, so I'm hoping that we'll be on the lower side of 4%, but we'll see. And part of it comes down to the rating that's issued as well. So we're in, in fact, I had my first meeting with our financial advisor and bond attorney and some of the other financial folks. And, you know, we're looking at how to structure the bonds to be able to preserve our existing bond, the rating on existing bonds that we have, as well as get the best rating we can on the new bonds. So that's going to take a little more analysis, but I'm optimistic that we can get that done here in the next month or so.
Thank you.
Mr. Bullock?
I will save my comments to the end. I'm sorry.
Mr. McAdonald?
I want to thank staff, Mr. E. Broom and staff, for putting together the update. I think, you know, it's clear from your comments in this update, and I know from our offline discussions, that staff takes very seriously the commitment to deliver as we have advertised. And I think, you know, I know it's very important for all of us on council to see that through. And so I appreciate the efforts to lay out this plan at the high level. I know the detailed work is ongoing, and as we just heard from Mr. Tinklinburg, lots of that detailed work already in motion. So we look forward to this plan continuing to take shape and obviously getting into the details and seeing things start to take physical shape. One thing that ran through my head is you were talking about the next 90 days, and we talk about putting things out for bid. And I don't know that we've talked about this before, but have we done any ballpark on what number of jobs we expect that these projects will actually create? It's just an interesting thing that occurred to me, that we'll have five years of activity here, and that's certainly going to require people to move those projects forward. It'd be interesting to get an estimate of how many jobs we, I know, obviously not permanent jobs, but jobs for the course of those projects.
Well, Mr. Mayor, we haven't done that, but we'll see if we can put together some estimates. It certainly is a significant number. Again, the total projected cost of $137 million. So we'll see if we can't put together some estimates.
That would be great. And then, obviously, you talked about the communications plan and the site for the development community to look at opportunities to work on the project. Obviously, I think we're eager to see what the communication strategy and the public outreach, public face of that looks like. I think we're all eager to see an opportunity for our citizens to be able to essentially tune in to these projects and follow them closely. So we appreciate all of the effort and look forward to seeing things take shape.
Okay. Mr. Douglas?
Yes, thank you for bringing this up tonight on our agenda. On these smaller parks, is this, will this be an opportunity for some of our city employees to, as far as saving cost on maybe putting some of these objects or so or part of the park amenities together?
Initially, we're not anticipating utilizing existing city staff to build any of the projects, not that that's out of the question. We've developed a staff level, a number of employees in the organization to maintain existing operations without necessarily the ability to take on special projects, but we can certainly continually evaluate that.
Okay. And, because I, just going for on these three parks, just to make sure, because we did put it out there, that we want, we wanted the folks who live in these different parks, because they're the ones who are going to be using it, the end users, to make sure that we put in amenities that they could use. And not for all the parks to look like cookie cutters, give something special for those areas so people can have a certain identity, say, hey, this is my park, and this is the reason why I like go to this park. So are we going to have sort of, just beginning here since most of these parks, you know, within the next two years, each park's going to be designed and put up, that there's going to be public input for make sure that we do go through and identify each park, because we only get one chance to get it right? And I just want to make sure that we clarify that, because we did put that out there. We want, we want the public's input when this comes up, and it sounds like we do have some sort of design in mind, which is fine, but at least have their input on, in mind.
Mr. Douglas makes a good point. Public outreach, public input into each of the projects is a part of the public outreach effort that will be discussed on January 13th. The neighborhood parks are an example of where the list of options is more limited so it can stay within the budget and remain consistent with other neighborhood parks. The new recreation center is on the other end of that spectrum, where there's an awful lot of details that remain to be determined for that facility. But each of the five projects requires differing levels of community input, and each of the projects has differing levels of sort of options available to them, if that makes sense. But public input for each of the projects is a key component of the outreach efforts going forward.
And I just want to ask, on the Conter Heritage and Cultural Center, right now now, we have, we have, we have parks and rec employees in that, where would those employees be relocated to?
That's a good question. We haven't finalized that yet. We're looking at existing city facilities where the four staff people that are at the Connor Community Center can be relocated to, at least on an interim basis. Some of those folks will end up in, in the new, potentially in the new recreation center. Initially, they're being relocated to existing city facilities.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Amador?
First, I'd like to say thank you to everybody out there who voted for 2K for getting this passed. It's an exciting time for the city, absolutely. I've followed this for some time and saw that in previous pasts, bond issues have not passed or sales tax increases. So it's a huge undertaking for the city, so I'd really appreciate, I really appreciate the proposed schedule and the, the timing of everything, the responsiveness for the city. I'd really like to focus on the, the communication and the outreach portion for transparency. I know that this is a moving target at this point and it's a shot in the dark right now, but it's a very good shot in the dark from what I can tell. And this is also a great opportunity to boost our local economy. So thank you voters and it'll be interesting to see how the city manages this and the city council will definitely keep you in the loop. Thank you.
Mr. Bullock?
Echoing Mr. Amador's thoughts, I would like to also thank the citizens for voting this in because without their votes, none of this would be a, a presentation tonight. I'd also like to thank staff for the work that they've done on this so far to give this brief update to the community on how we're going to proceed forward. And I would like to thank my fellow council people, persons for all of their support that we gave to this 2K because without us, this might not have been passed also. So there's a lot of thanks to give around and there's a really big project about to start and so I just, it's Commerce City's about to blow up. And so just keep your eyes on everything because, and I don't mean blow up in that way, I mean blow up in the good way, okay? But just thank you to everybody. Keep your eye on Commerce City.
I'd have to agree with a lot of what I've heard from my council colleagues. I too want to thank them and, and all the voters and all of the hardworking people of the community that really got engaged and participated with 2K. I know Sandy Carruthers is in the audience. She was one of those folks that was on that committee, several of our business partners in, in the city. Also, a lot of our staff, the efforts that, that went into the different portions of the Quality Community Initiative, they, they spent a lot of countless hours to try to make sure we were putting something together that would be very beneficial to our community. So I want to thank you all. And, and I think it's important to say that the ballot language spelled out what projects have to be done with this and this council fully intends to meet the, the deadline of the five years and to have all five of those projects completed. I think above and beyond the 2K piece, to get the ramp funding to build Highway Two from 72nd all the way to I-76th or to 120th Avenue, four lanes, is a huge transportation piece for our community, as well as when you tie that in with Tower Road. We have 96th Avenue is, is going through. We're working on the engineering portion of the, the penny ramp. We've got the Boys and Girls Club piece coming in. We've got the Mile High Greyhound Park Development Opportunity, as well as many economic development pieces that we will soon be able to divulge to the, the residents after the contract period with, with these companies. But when it comes to economic development, both in the South and the North, when it comes to transportation infrastructure, as well as Parks and Rec, I think that this council and this staff have really stepped up to try to provide to the residents of this community what they've been needing for a long time. So it's not just the 2K piece, it's, it's everything else that goes with it. The thing that everybody's going to have to understand is they're going to have to bear with the construction that takes place over the next few years. 104th will continue to be widened till we get to the river. Out of all the years that I've been with the city, I haven't seen the opportunities that I see today with the citizens' engagement and, and with their vote to approve the 2K, along with the relationships that have been built with the state to take care of Highway Two. Commerce City's in a really good position to move this community forward and to have those amenities that we all, growing up over the years in this community, have wanted to see. The shopping opportunities and the recreation opportunities, but to help tie that north-south piece together that has so much been this, this separation and, and the, the traffic issues that we've, we've seen over the last few years during rush hour on both of those major roadways. I, I am really looking forward to the next few years with Commerce City and to be able to, to make sure that the, the residents get what they bought into on this last election. So thank you all very much.
All right, we'll move on to the next item. Go into administrative council business. Is there any administrative council business? Mr. Bullock?
Yes, sir. We have on our city manager report, the different boards and commissions that each of us are on. And I just wanted, there's some discrepancies on some and some are left out. The Noise Committee for NLC is twice a year, it's both conferences, and it just showed once a year. The Youth Commission isn't on here and that's Ms. Carson and myself. And the Stapleton Cab isn't on here and that's my, myself, once a month. The Youth Commission is two times a month, all the months except the summer months. We, right now, are starting to exclude the summer months when the kids are out of school. Also, I would like to add to that, NLC University. I've been appointed as one of the fellows to NLC University and it requires three meetings a year, two at the general conferences in the summer, I mean in March in Washington, DC, and wherever the Congress of City Conference is, and at the NLC Summit they have in the fall. So I would just like that added. It should have been, something should be put in every council person's packet because I gave it to the staff to give to everyone so they would see that that appointment was made and it doesn't come as a surprise to anyone. But those are the only discrepancies that I picked up on it. Did any of the other council members, any committees that they belong to that weren't on this list?
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Bullock, for mentioning that. If you, if you have a chance to look at it after tonight's meeting and you see any errors or omissions, please let me or City Clerk Laura Bauer know. Laura maintains that, that spreadsheet for us and obviously it's changing all of the time. The reason we've provided it tonight is to give you an opportunity to look at it because December 2nd would be the meeting where the city council traditionally annually looks at those Boarding Commission appointments and decides collectively who's going to sit on which. So any of that feedback is very helpful. We get an updated one out to you as part of the packet for December 2nd to help facilitate that discussion on the 2nd.
Okay. Thank you. Any other administrative council business? Saying none, we'll go into Mr. McBroom?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, just one request of council. We do anticipate the need for an executive session on December 2nd, which would necessitate city council taking an action tonight to start that meeting at 5:30.
Oh. Mr. Bullock?
Livewell Cottorata, myself and Ms. Elliott are the two members of the Livewell Cottorata, if you want to put that down there too. And they have meetings, I know one's at CML, but it's infrequent meetings throughout the year and so we just get a, a couple of months ahead of time when a meeting's going to be. I'm sorry, I forgot that word.
Okay. Looks like we have one item during administrative council business we need to take action on. That would be allow for an executive session to take place on December 2nd. Is there a council person ready to make a motion? Mr. Amador?
So moved.
Mr. McAdonie?
Second.
I have a motion in second to allow for an executive session to take place on December 2nd. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, December 2nd.
And, and I'll get a, a notice out for the clerk's office that'll be for DIA issues.
Correct.
And then also for, I believe you wanted something about the city attorney's evaluation you, and also-
And the judge's.
Judge and municipal judge evaluation.
Correct.
Just to follow up and close that out.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, now we'll go into reports. We'll start with Mr. Gaylor.
I don't, it's good to be back. I've been gone for a few days, you may know. Of interest though, while I was on the East Coast, an article, and I'm sorry, I can't be more specific about this, but there was something that you, I'm sure, are aware of that came out complimenting the potential that the City of Commerce City has as a city that has an image for the future, growth, and all positive. And my brother-in-law on the East Coast brought that to my attention. So was that in the Denver Post or where was that?
I believe it was in the Denver Post, yes, and it was, it was sent to me as well.
Was that the Nine News piece?
Yeah, Nine News.
Yes, that was it.
Yep.
I thought you'd be interested in knowing that. On the East Coast, I heard about it, so.
That's it.
I don't have anything else to mention.
Thanks, Bob. Welcome back. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did distribute via email, actually during the executive session, this week's edition of the City Manager Update. Just very briefly, we've provided an update to address Councilman McAdonie's concerns about traffic in the area of Bell Creek Boulevard and 104th Avenue. We've also got some follow-up information in response to Mr. Douglas's questions and concerns about the RTD parking ride that's on the south side of 104th, east of Highway Two. We've provided an update about the ongoing zoning case related to a billboard proposed in the area of 9985 Tower Road. It's an area that's in the county. The planning commission for the county has recommended denial, but we anticipate it going before the Board of Commissioners December 9th. We have an update on anticipated repairs that we would like to see where the Burlington Northern Railroad crosses Yosemite Street, north of 88th Avenue. Mr. Douglas had asked us to reach out to Suncor, to have Suncor provide an update of how the flood impacted their property. Mr. Gallagher will be here December 16th to provide an update. Several members of council had identified a conflict between the city's hometown holiday event and the Commerce City Business and Professional Association holiday event. We've made some adjustments to the hometown holiday event. I know the CCBPA has made some adjustments to their schedule that evening that I think allows council members to attend both events. So we're very appreciative of the CCBPA working with us to, to make those adjustments. As was discussed earlier, we've provided information to council members to help facilitate your organizational meeting on December 2nd. Again, if you see other omissions or errors in that spreadsheet, we'll get that corrected so you have accurate information December 2nd to decide on the appointments for the coming year. We had talked at the previous study session about using the December 3rd study session timeframe as a reception for your state legislators, so this is just confirming that we are proceeding to schedule that event for December 23rd. It will be from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Bison Grill. And as a reminder, I will be out of town getting this Thursday, back in town next week, but out of the office through, through the Thanksgiving holiday, back on Monday, December 2nd. And as usual, we've attached a look ahead of the city council work schedules so you have an idea of what's coming in the future on your city council agendas. So as usual, we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Great. Thank you, Brian. Okay, for my report, I think it's important to let everybody know I was out of town for a while. While I was out of town, I need to thank Mr. Bullock for taking over and running the council meeting two weeks ago. Appreciate that. That doesn't happen very often, Mr. Bullock.
I take advantage of it when I can.
I know you do. But I did cut my, my vacation short, came back in time to do some, to, to make it a point to be here for the DIA mediation that took place last week. My colleague, Mr. Teeter, was with me at that, at that, those two events. Also, we, as a council, all went outside of Mr. McAdonie to Seattle, Washington, for the National League of Cities Conference. I want to thank you on behalf of my council colleagues, thank the residents of Commerce City for allowing us to go. I did bring back quite a bit of information. I've already given it to the city manager on, on several different array of items from Parks and Rec to improving our emergency response training, to, to many different facets. I know each and every one of the council members is very busy. We only had one evening that we all got together and went and had a meal, but we did that on our own, out of our per diems. The city didn't end up paying for anything outside of our normal per diems. So I appreciate the council being there and learning and, and educating themselves on the items that they felt they needed education on. It was a, it was a good event. They did get to, to see several other colleagues from around the state that helped, continue to have, keep those relationships solid. I, I think is an extremely important piece of, of the job. But since I've been back as of yesterday at 6:30, congratulations to the Broncos. I think that's important, you know, Kansas City, we've got to do it again in two weeks, but it was a great game last night. I did go to Turnberry Elementary School today with my colleague Dick McLean, Mayor of Brighton, and we allowed the second graders to interview us. Julia Emco was there with me and, and it was really a, a nice afternoon to, to spend the afternoon with the second graders. And so there's not a whole lot more to report because we've been gone. However, I, I think it's important to thank Cheryl as the emergency unintended city clerk because of the accident that Laura had. We hope Laura a fast and speedy recovery, but I think it's important that the whole council and, and the residents realize that you stepped up and took us through a very serious election and everything went very smoothly and you're, you're very appreciated by this council to-
Thank you.
-to step into that role. So thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you.
With that, Mr. McBroom?
Just a quick note that the mayor reminded me of. Ms. Bauer has returned to work four hours a day, starting last week. So half-days last week and this week. She hopes to be back full-time starting next week.
Well, we look forward to her, her recovery and, and her presence back here in our council meetings and I'm sure Cheryl, after stepping into the fire out of the pan and, and handling things the way she did, she'll be ready for a little bit of a break herself. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, with that said, if there's no further, Mr. Douglas, I see you're lit up. You have something before I close this meeting up?
Uh, yeah, I just want to say-
Yeah, I just want to say, on November 7th, I met with the Cub Scouts PAC 704, and they had asked me to come there to interview me, and I appreciate, I was honored to participate in that, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Great. Anyone else have any additional comments to the report that I gave, since I was out of town for most of the last couple of weeks?
Thank you. You did a good thing, Chris.
Perfect. Okay. If there be no further business to come before the council this evening, we are adjourned. Thank you all for being here, and we'll take a short five-minute break, and then we're going to go into the ECA GID meeting.
Sorry, the master of the unit was still on. Chair Ford?
Here.
Vice Chair Bullock?
Here.
Board Member Amador?
Present.
Board Member Teeter?
Here.
Board Member Carson?
Board Member Benson?
Here.
Board Member McAdonie?
Here.
Board Member Elliott?
Present.
Board Member Douglas?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Let the record show that the councils are the board of directors at all in attendance except for Board of Director member JD Carson. Now, we have to take into account the minutes for the meeting minutes for July 15th, 2013, and August 5th, 2013. And as far as I know, all of the board of directors members that are here this evening will be allowed to vote on both sets of those minutes. So, is there a motion?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. Confirming with Mr. Councilman Benson, the July 15th date is correct, that all were present.
Thank you. Mr. McAdonie?
Would move to approve the minutes of July 15th and August 5th, 2013.
Thank you. Director Amador?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of July 15th, 2013, and August 5th, 2013. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next, we have Resolution CGID 2013-08. Is there any board member that has any questions regarding this resolution? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board on this resolution? Seeing none. Open for a motion, Mr. Bullock.
Move to approve Resolution CGID 2013-08.
Thank you. Mr. McAdonie?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will the attorney please read the resolution?
Title of resolution reads, "Resolution Adopting the 2014 Budget and Certification of the Mill Levy for the E-470 Commercial Area General Improvement District (ECA GID) for the Year 2013."
Thank you. Title's been read. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Now, we go, I will go ahead and adjourn the ECA GID meeting, and we will call to order the E-470 Residential Area General Improvement District meeting. Will the clerk or the secretary please call the roll?
Chair Ford?
Here.
Vice Chair Bullock?
Here.
Board Member Amador?
Present.
Board Member Teeter?
Here.
Board Member Carson?
Board Member Benson?
Here.
Board Member McAdonie?
Here.
Board Member Elliott?
Present.
Board Member Douglas?
Present.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you. Please let the record reflect that Board of Directors member JD Carson is not here this evening. Everybody else is present. I'd like to ask, see if there's a board member has any questions with Resolution RGID 2013-03. Mr. Benson?
If I remember correctly, it's not possible for any one piece of property to be in both of these GIDs. Is that right? Is that correct?
Mr. Tinkler?
Right. It's not possible for a property that is zoned commercial to be in the residential or residential to be in the commercial. Now, a property owner might own both types of property.
Okay. It would be two different, geographically, two different pieces of property.
Correct.
I just didn't want to see somebody get hit with 57 mils.
No.
Up there.
That will not happen.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does it take care of your concerns, Mr. Benson?
Yes, sure.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or concerns on this resolution by the Board of Directors for the GID? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board on this Seeing no one, I'll ask for a motion. Mr. McAdonie?
Move to approve RGID 2013-03.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock, second. I have a motion and a second. Will the Board of Directors Attorney please read the title?
Title reads, "Resolution Adopting the 2014 Budget and Certification of the Mill Levy for the E-470 Residential Area General Improvement District (ERA GID) for the Year 2013."
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Title's been read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. If there be no further business to come before the residential area GID, we are adjourned. Thank you all for being here this evening. RGID 2013-03. Mr. Benson?